May I have the note?
Yeah.
Mr. Creed, yes, that's Mr. Rivera.
Yeah.
Mr. Ruth?
Here.
Mr. Vayner?
Here.
Mr. Barr?
Thank you.
Mr. Zanarino?
Here.
Notice of this meeting was provided to the borough's board of leaders in prior news filed with the municipal clerk in post on the municipal board on December fifth, twenty twenty four, with this in question. I'm glad we made it to speak at the time. We understand. I think it's quite important to discuss this case. What we have to talk about. If it is spot of case, we're going to bring it here. Welcome to the eighth one week, twenty twenty five meeting of the boroughs and boroughs. So this meeting is being conducted in person in the council chambers through the borough hall. It is being broadcast live on YouTube and not zoomed to make it as convenient as possible for residents to attend the meeting. Members of the public who are here in person and those attending remotely on Zoom will be given the opportunity to comment at appropriate times during the meeting in accordance with the public guidelines. Members of the public will be allowed to speak during the open sessions and during formal public hearings on the agenda, including public hearings and ordinances. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker, which will be monitored and enforced by the borough clerk. Comments containing offensive, profane, or indecent language, the language constituting hate speech will not be permitted. Remote participants will be muted unless they are unmuted by the clerk, and remote participants will not be able to unmute themselves. The clerk will mute remote speakers at the expiration of their agreements of a law to the month or if to make any inappropriate or offensive comments. All speakers, whether in person or on Zoom, shall state their name and address before making their comments. Speakers on Zoom shall activate their cameras so that they can be seen by members of the governing body and the audience. Failure of the governing body to provide a live broadcast of this meeting or technological problems encountered during the course of the meeting that affect remote viewing and or participation will not invalidate this meeting or any action taken, including but not limited to the adoption of any ordinance, resolution, or motion. Okay. Johanna, would you like to do the honors? Our first item on the agenda is a presentation from the environmental community report. Do you agree? So I will just.
Good evening.
I want to do yes.
Yes, Johanna was. Uh, Washington Corner Road, and I have the honor tonight of presenting the environmental stewardship of forest to Kathy Redden. Uh, just a quick history of the award. Uh, it was introduced by, um, what's it? Attention of the environmental commission by Rosalie Valentine. Back, I think, in like twenty oh four, uh, we thought it was a good idea. The way awards are awarded, the way we get these awards is by, um, a nomination from a member of the environmental commission. We have no set time that we adhere by or criteria, so they vary. Right now, they're not mounted on the hall and downstairs, so I was gonna do a camp, uh, for you, but, uh, please look at them. They give a brief description of why we recognize each of these people. The first person was our first award was for Meadowbrook Farms because of their beautiful scenic piece, uh, and to our town. The last one was for Perry, um, Hazelton, for all her wonderful work with, um, like making our trails usable by her residents. I can say a lot, I have a few here, but, um, I think the most obvious, um, of that all of us would recognize is the plantings of the borough's rain gardens. Rain gardens are particularly important because they're one of the best management practices for solving or mitigating stormwater issues. Kathy was involved early with this and has continued to work with Dr. Chris Rupsta of Rutgers Water Conservation Department. And consequently, thanks to American News and our works department, we have two rain gardens on my brick road that, uh, protect our homes in that area. And we have two at the public library, all of which are functioning well. Kathy worked closely with Rutgers and Rowland Headwaters to achieve this. She, um, she promotes and organizes volunteers for reading and other maintenance of them. She has provided the library with rain garden and native plant manuals for references for the public. Kathy and Ron installed rain garden on the property. And she recently presented two programs on rain gardens at her local library for residents. She's a beekeeper and an advocate for pollinators. For some examples, she's worked on pollinators to display at the truck and treat event, brought some for a lot of bees with her. She harvested, made a plant seed pot from her garden and gave it away at an environmental commission table at the full farms market. She and Ron lent and towed their garden equipment wagon, which the EC members fashioned into a pollinator garden, complete with their beehive boxes to participate in the Burnsville Christmas parade. She also is a contributor of her time and her knowledge for the environmental garden, the community garden, and then twenty twenty garden, which the ECs planted in honor of all seniors who missed out on their graduation ceremonies during COVID. Kathy organized styrofoam collection at the Green Team's food waste event and now at the Pelago waste collections. This is important now, especially because of the increase of styrofoam while people are ordering and having deliveries from online. A real win-win downtown prod- project is the EC and G, um, environmental commission and Green Team volunteers collecting compostable organic scraps from some of our local restaurants and transporting it to Canis Empi for their fertilizer. Kathy served the EC very well. She was on subcommittees. Two important ones were the promotion of electric, electric vehicles and their chargers. And she was awarded a grant for the borough EV acquisition. In land use, her understanding of stormwater mitigation is invaluable, as is her knowledge of the latest NJDP rules and concerns, concerns for tier M four. Kathy worked on upgrading the environmental resource index. This is required by the NJDP and Sustainable Jersey. She works well, local printer for this and other publications. Partnering with Rowland Headwaters for the latest revision of the ERI is saving the borough money. She designed the EC sandwich board as well as designed the decals recognizing green businesses and ten. To be more inclusive, she worked with Diane Begner to translate to Spanish flyers on recycling and disposal practices. Kathy's ability to communicate well with people from various associations and affiliations serves Burnsville and its natural environment very, very well. Rowland Headwaters, Rutgers, our library, municipal personnel, the school system, other environmental commissions as Bassman Ridge, Bedminster, Long Hill, Madison, et cetera. Currently, she's working with Burnsville students, winning design, winning design posters for promoting recycling, which will be mounted on local recycling containers. I apologize for any omission in this tally of Kathy's successes, which I am certain I have made. I know this list could go on and on. I shall leave it with this. We very much appreciate Kathy for these accomplishments and now for her active participation as a member of the Green Team. This is her at the borough's second green fair, celebrating mothers. Um, appreciated. Mother nature's appreciation, the last page of the turn. That is this Saturday, May tenth, uh, at the, uh, pay stations. Um, should be very nice, and so then get this, you know? Sorry for my soft voice, I'm dealing with signs and check bin and, uh. I can take the old lady glasses off.
And thank you council, our support of the environmental commission, Green Team in the past ten years since I joined EC and hopefully for many, many more. And more important, I just want to take two minutes to thank one person who's here physically and one in spirit, Sherry Crawley, who was one of the first recipients of Don Spencer, some of whom know, who was on the EC and started recycling here in the seventies.
Can we introduce the members of the environmental commission that are here tonight?
Oh, sure.
Just so the council knows who they are?
Sure. We have a P S member, Melissa Lee, yeah. We have Tom Oates, who is, uh, one of the advisor Kathy, another great advisor. Jeff Hammond, who is now also chair of the Green Team. And now, Oliver.
Kathy, I'll be joined by my.
Yeah, we have another new environmental person here, Christine Rivera, she's a chair of the state. It's nice to celebrate, it's nice to do the celebrations. Um, Jeff, you're up next with the adopted drain program.
Uh, Jeff Hammond, thank you for the luck work. Uh, so yeah, just following up to, uh, discussions we've had in the past and to give some additional information, uh, the adopted drain program, um, is something we proposed last year, um, got the buy up from John McCall, and then he left, and but I talked with Kevin since then, and he was an agreement principal with the idea, but, uh, there was a question about the cost. I did reach out to Han Line University, which sponsored this program as part of their environmental studies program, and, uh, through some with charm and charisma, I guess, uh, you got the price down from four thousand dollars to nine hundred dollars. Yeah, that's my first word, but the idea there would be, it's a six hundred dollar registration fee, and then there's some other technical stuff that they can do for us, um, in terms of tracking the spots, which was an official three hundred, then at that point thereon, uh, the yearly registration fee to be able to use their uh, top provided material and name is six hundred dollars. Uh, it's, the program has been in eleven states now. Um, it's got about eleven thousand, I think the number one is communities, uh, eight hundred, uh, sites in New Jersey, not eight hundred communities, but eight hundred, uh, plus drains. Um, it was adopted, I think, first in this area by Westfield, then was picked up by Berkeley Heights in two thousand twenty-two. I spoke with the environmental commission, person of Berkeley Heights, who, um, uh, is in charge of this particular program. And, uh, they've over since two thousand twenty-two have collected five thousand pounds of debris from the drains. And she's, uh, was very excited to tell me that's the equivalent of three elephants. I didn't fact check that. Well, look, um, and now it's recently picked up, uh, just within a couple of weeks ago by Morris Plains, uh, not sorry, um, Morris township. Um, and, uh, they've already got thirty households signed up. So what I'm here to do is to see what kind of support we can get for the program. Frankly, the Berkeley Heights Westfield started out by getting a grant for the initial upfront costs, and then because it was so successful, if the maintenance fee of the six hundred dollars a year is funded through their DPW, um, I'd like to be able to bypass the grant process and and go directly to where some sort of support or cost sharing in, uh, the Green Team and the borough. Uh, and, and then that's, and I know you're talking about the budget a little bit later in the meeting. If that's not feasible, at least get the go ahead from you that we can go ahead and pursue the program and start to get people lined up, and then we'll find the money afterwards somehow.
And this is, if you maybe explain it to people what exactly the program is.
Okay, so, um, and I don't know how many drains we have here in, in, in town, but the, as anybody who lives in, on some of our areas, you know, when you've had uh, heavy rain, um, there's a lot of debris that gets caught up in the drain, our DPW goes around periodically to clean these off. The idea of this, this program is to get households to adopt the drain, that's the name. Um, and then they're, uh, on their own, I mean, there's no, they'll be looking over their shoulder, they can do it weekly, monthly, quarterly, whatever. They clean up the drain, bag the stuff, put it in their trash, um, and it's self-reported. It, it, it's beneficial to the DPW because it helps reduce some of their manpower costs, it's definitely beneficial to the, to the, um, you know, integrity of the water supply here because you're keeping things out of the drains. Um, the, uh, program's expanding naturally, uh, uh, the, um, it's pretty much self-reported in terms of the amount now. The way they keep the thing going is that you have various contests, so, um, yeah, everybody names their drain. And you can come up with whatever name for the drain when running over contests, and that's good with the kids, and you, and it's also really good to get penetration into the middle school and high school here for this. And then you can also get the contest for, um, uh, who puts in most that order or that month or whatever. And as well, for example, uh, in Berkeley Heights, they've used some of the grant money to get, buy rakes, and they give the rakes as, as gifts, as, as an example. So that's the program in short.
Sounds great.
Yeah. Dr. Hammond, um, thanks for all the work on it, I really appreciate it. Uh, so you said it's nine hundred initially, and you said the breakdown was three hundred for registration fee and then the kind of annual expense of six hundred?
Six hundred is the registration.
Three hundred annual?
No, six hundred and.
It is.
Six hundred register.
Okay.
Three hundred.
Simple stuff, right? Yeah, so six hundred.
Yes.
Six hundred, yeah, right, the six hundred is, is the registration, and then they're gonna continue to, I think it's three hundred ninety-five or something. They do it based on the population of the town, so, you know, it's a, it's sort of sliding scale.
And is there, I assume then you get all the logos and promotional material things too?
Right, and, and of course, that's where the thousands of dollars of cost was, it could help, they'll be happy to sell it to you. As, as part of the registration, you get, uh, the samples, and you can then copy them yourself, or you can get them reduced yourself. So you get, yeah, you get that material.
Anybody else? Sounds great.
Yeah.
Do we have it in the DPW budget?
I think we can scrape nine hundred dollars together. Is it a farm in the area? Because I'm, we have our ingredients.
Oh, I thought from John McCall, you did, but you, you, you can pay, you, you pay them for the, for the GIS mapping, but, uh, basically, we, we're not really really needed, that we can identify which our problem drains are. I guess there's two ways of doing this, and one, everybody sort of does it, it's, um, they put up a map and say, here's our drain, you want to adopt one, volunteer. The other way to do it is, okay, we have these, I'll make up a number, twenty-five problem drains that are really, really, you know, accumulate material. Well, we know what those drains are, we can find people directly in that area, solicit them to see whether they'd be willing to do it, so you, you, you could use the GIS, but you don't need.
But I think, I think, Kevin, that it was, you had to give it to them to put on the site, like, right?
Well, that was, that was part of my negotiation, but that, that then, Stan, it doesn't benefit us, and then you don't have to do that.
They just, yeah, we kind of need to do that. Yeah, good rhythm.
Thank you.
Thanks, thanks to the Green Team for coming up with the idea and moving it forward. Thanks. The self-examination of budget resolution? We have a presentation on that, or is it?
Yeah.
No, the presentation just, how much sharing?
Yeah, it's just, we have to do that first.
Yeah, we have, we have full hires.
Just like the audit?
Yeah.
Directly?
Thanks for coming. It's on the door. So we won't be offended if you want to pay. Bring us there with the budget.
Change with that.
So need to move that position, yeah.
Move that resolution, twenty-five dash seventy-three A, self-examination of budget resolution. Uh, I'm sorry.
Uh, roll call, please.
Mr. Rivera?
Yes.
Yeah. Mr. Vayner?
Yes.
Mr. Zanarino? Mr. Zanarino?
Yes.
Twenty twenty-five budget, so, um, do not put up the last one.
Okay, so.
Yes, it's been our finance chair, so the budget committee was Ross and itself and Al, and of course CFO Leslie Higginson.
Serena?
And of course, our administrator and, um, they put a tremendous amount of time into it, so.
Go to the title.
Do that.
Yeah. So thank you, Mayor, and just gonna thank the people you just named, so thank you, no, no. One, one thing I do want to make safe for the public's benefit, um, the budget, uh, requires months of, of not just work and us meeting as a committee, but, um, really starts actually all council, so I actually want to thank all council members, um, who really kind of talk to, we kind of share with each other what our priorities are, why we, um, what we're hearing from the public, um, what we want to see in both the this year's budget, but also subsequent budgets, because they all build on top of each other. And, uh, it's a lot of work over the course of many months, we engage not just with each other and the finance committee with the support of, um, our administrator and our CFO, but I also want to thank a lot of the members of the administration who we met with, um, in the, you know, different departments throughout the borough, um, police department, public works department, et cetera, as well as those who have strong association with the borough directly related, such as the library and the fire department, and others that spent time to sit down maybe multiple times over the course of the end of last year and the beginning of this year with the, um, with the finance committee. So what we're about to see is, um, what we rolled out in the budget presentation last month. And then after I give the remarks here and take you through some, uh, slides that are really for the public's benefit, it's kind of like a user-friendly version of the budget, a little bit of public hearing and hearing the comments from the public. Okay, so, go to the next slide. Spirit, bottom line up front, um, here are the key takeaways for this year's budget. Uh, so no tax rate increase for the fourth straight year remains flat at point five, um, which we're really excited to do, and I'll go into this in a little bit. It increases non-discretionary items, these are kind of items that are either mandated or really core items such as utilities, which really we cannot change, so those increases on health insurance, contractual salaries, utilities, liability insurance, et cetera, really place like a strong, um, cost on the budget that we can't move, and so what we really play with, which I'll talk about, is the discretionary items. We increased the use of cash for capital purchases in order to reduce our further debt service. Um, we, a lot of that was also due to the sale of the Audi dealership, which I'll talk about soon, which helped to allow us to reduce our debt service. The borough valuation has increased for the fifth straight year, demonstrating really positive momentum in all the investments that we've been making into the borough's value. The budget makes key investments aligned with the community's priorities as we hear from council, investments in public safety, including, uh, starting the budget for the new ambulance, radios for fire EMS, increasing the fire department, and first aid squad, it's the first increase on the both the allocation we give to the fire department and the allocation we give to the first aid squad. Been many years, we want to thank the fire department for their partnership and talking to us about their needs as well, um, as well as allocation for operating funds. We fully funded the library request, and so we want to thank Fran and the library board for all the, not only work that they've done, but, um, kind of being, uh, very transparent, open with us over the course of months about what their needs were and, um, how we can partner with them. Securing fiscal stability by utilizing less fund balance, we completed the sale of the Audi dealership, which is sixty-five Moorestown, and able to do debt reduction. Um, adding a new taxpayer to the tax rolls, which will contribute to our fiscal strength, enhance local revenue and boost the visual appeal over downtown. Obviously, the borough still faces a lot of headwinds, inflation, state aid remains flat, that's really putting a burden on a lot of means and values throughout the state. And then just a reminder that what you'll see represents about a quarter of what the overall tax burden is, uh, also due to the county and school taxes that they receive as well. So on to the next slide. So here's our revenue appropriations. Um, what you'll see is kind of a euro, your, your increase in, if anybody was interested, we can go back, you know, as far as you need to on what either of these, um, any of these items are. Um, the biggest increase is this other revenue from three point five million in two thousand twenty-four to five million, five point one million in, uh, two thousand twenty-five, that's really due to the sale of the Audi dealership, which the sale from that created significant revenue for the borough that we then turned around and used for debt payment. That's solid revenue total increase of about two point seven million dollars and, um, and, uh, then we go to the next slide on non-discretionary expenses. So this is what I was talking about in the upfront, the summary I placed about twenty-one thousand for liability and workers' comp, hundred sixty-three thousand for health benefits, increase of forty-one thousand utilities, uh, debt service, that's from the Audi dealership, one point four million, and non-discretionary increases, um, of one point six altogether, um, so you can see about sixty-one percent of the budget was, um, obviously significantly from the sale of, oh, I'm sorry, that's fifty Moorestown, the fifty Moorestown sale, so the sale of that helped to, um, count for, uh, the budget differential. Next slide. Okay, so just to break it down into mandatory or discretionary, but, um, expenses that we had. So, um, mandatory, this includes about twenty-one million or fifty-seven percent of the entire budget. This is the services the boroughs require by law provide, um, to see if the clerk, the successor, the tax collector, as well as insurance to help benefits and recycling. Core services, this is where we, you know, could play with the funding, but we're not going to. Um, central services like public works, IT, and the payments for our utilities. Discretionary funding, which really only represents about four percent of what we actually control, um, nine, eight hundred and two thousand dollars. These are not essential and nor are required by law, and these are things that we choose or prioritize, such as recreation, the pool, library, historic preservation, et cetera. All together building up to a current budget as you see at twenty-one, point two million dollars. Next slide. So just kind of a breakdown here of, um, the, and the pie chart, the increases in the budget, uh, represent, see the largest increase was due to debt service and capital. And second, I'll just be in contractual salary, just about a quarter of the total. Next slide. Okay, just a reminder, you've got Benjamin Franklin there, uh, the borough of that hundred dollars, the borough is twenty-five dollars for it. Municipal open space is a dollar, county open space one point five, library one point seven, county taxes fourteen dollars, their largest expense, and I think all taxpayers nervous are really the school taxes that we pay. Okay, next slide. Okay, so let's spend a few minutes on this. This is the borough valuation, as you can see, from twenty twenty on, there's been a significant increase in the value of assessed value of the borough. Um, we've actually had a growth every year from twenty twenty on, representing, I think it's around, yep, six hundred and twenty-five, a million dollars total. So, um, this is good news, right? So the average of New Jersey home value has increased according to like six point five percent. This is an eight point eight percent in Burnsville, we're growing faster than the average value in New Jersey. This represents really because of, um, the borough's becoming more attractive, like this is the representation of the collective uh, assessed amount of all properties in the borough, that's not only the product value for house, the value of your land, but also any improvements that you made that are done independently by the tax successor, not anyone, you know, council or borough leadership. The, just to remind everyone, so, um, you are, we are assessed the total value for our land collectively. You are, we are assessed the total value for our land collectively. Obviously, the increase is from, you know, two hundred and twenty-six million over the course of the year. That means. For the most part, everybody's properties, whether you're in a commercial or residential property in the borough, properties have gone up. Um, you are assessed your taxes both based on the property value. And therefore, if your property value is going to go up, you're going not, you're going to pay in taxes or have one. Um, we think we've done our part in the borough by keeping the tax rate itself flat. Um, that recognizes that we can continue to control our spending by maintaining on the same exact rate on the borough. But the increase in your property value will of course translate to higher taxes on your assessed value. We think there obviously is some advantages of that, um, of the overall increased valuation. I think most people recognize that. It represents that the borough is becoming more attractive and more people want to move here because values are growing up, the value of your specific property. Has increased in value and then eventually hopefully years and years down the line when you go to sell your property. Um, it's worth more than when you bought it for and get the return to the value um, of what you purchased at that point too. Okay, next slide. As I said, here's the last few years, tax rate um, has either decreased or not increased at all for consecutive years. So. Twenty twenty-two remain flat, slightly decreased in twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, the rate remained flat in twenty twenty-five, the rate remained flat. Um, we were happy, we're, you know, we know that this is important. We try to do our part as much as possible to maintain um. Taxes as reasonable for borough residents. And so even though residents, obviously, um, want higher overall taxes, if they are, if their values go up in the property. Uh, we are able to look out as accounts to be able to maintain our rate flat. And um. Obviously, I should also say that the borough municipal tax rate, like I saw, I showed on that dollar slide, it's just one part of it. Um, other boards such as school, the school and the county, but also add their own rate and would have to do the same for taxes to remain flat at all. Okay, excellent. Um, just to kind of some other um. You just wanted to kind of sort of more detail. When we talk about the the rate, I mean, everybody is assessed not only the municipal tax, but a library. Tax as well and then an open space tax. And these how those, these are how those rates changed your area or insurance. And you also see we broke out here as requested. Um, I know a number of, we had a couple of requests, including from the paper. Uh, to show what the twenty twenty-five average residential assessment is. So the average residential assessment has really gone up in Bernersville. It's nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And um, average homes altogether pays five thousand dollars. Um, obviously, it's a big. That's our, right, the municipal, not the whole. Right. So you're going to pay higher than that based on the school tax and accounting tax. So. Okay, next slide. So just another breakdown, and we're going to put all these online. So you don't have to take screenshots or um, jot notes, but. Uh, these are how the appropriations really break down. Um, trying to get a specific as, you know, where where you can see one percent. I won't go through it all. Um, but yeah, the biggest ones are D P W, obviously with the road improvements that we continue to do. Public safety, all-inclusive, fire, um, police, et cetera, everything that we spend in the public safety bucket, um, salaries, et cetera. Okay, so I want to spend maybe the last minute or two going just through the next two slides on the capital program for the year. Um. So we tried to be, you know, very down as much as um, specific as possible. On where we're spending our capital allocation for the year. You can see um, you know, police SUVs, the ballistic vest with police. Um, computer upgrades, body worn cameras, which we are required to do, I believe now, recording equipment. Um, the police department capital expense at two hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. Emergency management, command vehicle, mobile radios, departmental total, emergency management of forty-three thousand. Public works, new pickup truck, radios, uh, skid steel trailer, altogether, uh, hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars. Next slide. Okay, so engineering totals, you can see the breakdown of um, specific. Road improvements, the Mill and Cave projects. Um, just I have a question about that. Let me just pull that up real quick. I just wanted to be specific that. Um, is for hardscrabble, Holly Ridge, Dogwood, Sterling Road, Cedar Lane and Skyline Drive. And uh, the public works committee, the public works department does a great job of looking at all the roads in the borough. Rating them, how tiered they are, prioritizing them. And then we work collectively with the um, public works team. To then prioritize those inside the budget. If you recall in years past, we'd actually sometimes pause all spending in some areas to really make an investment like we did in Bernersville. Were required in total refurberation, a cost, I think, three hundred million dollars between everything. And so we've tried to be diligent as to like really invest where we need a strong upgrade or just continually to upgrade on a rotating basis. Um. Recreation program, uh, fifteen thousand dollars recreation there. And then just a couple of large administrative items that you'll see. Hundred fifty thousand dollars is really I T, the I T expense when we decided to contract right in the borough as well as. Repairs on Borough Hall that we anticipate making. And then we had a resolution later on, we're going to talk about. Security cameras and door security. We have a hundred and seventy-five thousand budgeted there. This is really a long upgrade that we've needed on. Um, a number of secure cameras and properties really at the best of the police department and um.
Library.
The library.
Station, um. The full whole underground, the library, the transportation, forty-eight. Forty-eight, forty-two cameras and eight door.
Yeah, yeah.
So a big investment in security.
And um. One last thing, it's all funded with cash, no additional debt in the budget adding, in this budget adding to um, the borough's debt total. So uh, with that, these slides along with the actual detailed deep dive budget is online. Um, happy to take any questions either from council, but thank you to every member of council for their input and partnership. And with that, we back to the main over here.
Okay, um. So it, I will now open the public hearing. So if anyone has any questions. Please come up on the silver. The X. Uh, just a question about the um, security. Did something happen at those pedal locations that calls for that kind of security?
Well, Franken testament. Somebody took out the drop box.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Went the fourth time.
Right.
Um. It's just. I don't think we've had any specific incidents, but there have been over the years where, uh, you know, there may be a car left there and. Or somebody tries to open a door, somebody tries to unlock something. Yes. In fact, we had some things. Um. So we have had um. Ding in our buildings. Um, we have and we have cameras, we have the color cameras, um, but they're out of service more than they're in service. Um, because it was not a good system. To begin with, when I was bought. Um, we do have some uh, requirement that certain places be. Uh, video taped, uh, believe we have to, like for example, the ballot box, we have to have a year. We know for a classic couple of years ago, for a year worth of footage. Right now, we have no footage. We should have accounted anymore. Um, so. Uh, there are incidents, there are people trip and fall and then they see the borough and we have no. Photographic or camera evidence to prove whether they did or didn't. So um, something I had mentioned is one case like that and this whole system paid for it. So and, you know, and in one incident. So um, and then I know uh, what, I think it was the environmental commission um. For the door access besides security and not having to paint block when employees leave. Uh, in here, police department, um. Uh, for the downstairs of the library, um, where the summit is, uh, because that is where people were sleeping. Um. Here, just as a matter of convenience as well, the environmental commission comes for reading. And the doors go there because there's no employee who's here to open it and then. So what it does is it enable us, in addition to the security, enable us to put doors on schedules. So they can open at eight thirty morning when we open, includes at four thirty, they can reopen again. Immediately at seven o'clock for a meeting or whatever. So in addition to the security. Um, in addition to knowing who has access to, but who's going in and out of buildings, there is a matter of convenience too for the door um, control as well. Yeah, but um. Uh, most of it is security for the, is the camera, much of the thought.
Well, and I think you also said it's the same system that the school is using. So the police then have, you know, easy access to all the cameras and, you know, on a unified system, which I think is.
Yes, and um. Uh, it includes um. Uh. All of the, all the parts, all the installation, all the cabling, like a lot of our buildings are very hard access. I mean, this. The walls are pretty thick, so um, they're hard to access, hard to work in. So the labor is more intensive to get the cameras in place. So this includes all of the cabling, all of the work, all the installation and includes uh, tenure warranty for replacement parts. Um, and then it includes the, all the system that's developed where the police can. It's a, it is a high-tech system. Um, there uh. A I involved where they could like search through if they, if they, if they targeted something in the parking lot, they can search through for a particular license plate that. You know, somebody saw or come going back. They could search for a, a woman in her orange shirt, you know, like there's. There's a lot of things that make the police job easier, you know, if they don't, when they have discovery, it helps with their accreditation because the inside cameras. The hot camera, the jail cell that they don't have now that will enable them to meet the criteria of accreditation. There's so many benefits and I know it's a big chunk of money, but our security here is like. Not existent. And um, so it's. And like we brought you that, I, you know. We've got to talk about labor, which is on the agenda and Danny Richard is going to come up. Because he worked on it with Jay with along with Kevin Martin for D P W, and we've been looking at most early in the year. So um. We had pared this down. It was a lot and we got rid of like a lot of the extras, you know. Um, so also uh, over at the library, like the, the book drop or the parking where we have numerous company. Um, we would have cameras there at the polo ground. Um, we spent a lot of money on this field. So it's good to have, you know. Cameras there and for vehicles and for, you know, if you are, you know, the police, it allows the police to be alerted if somebody's in the building at night or when they shouldn't be or on the field. Um, so and then eventually we'll have a pavilion there and we always intended to put cameras there at the back. Yeah. So again, I recognize it's a significant amount of money. Um. But it's long overdue. It's, you know, it's really the latest technology and and it's not just like, it's not like, oh, it's. Thing is, I think it can send the most to.
Yeah, definitely are. Agree.
People say.
And the beauty of it is that we're not getting more debt, you know, that is coming from capital and we have a cash to do it. So. Yeah, anyone else? Come on. Yeah. Howard, yeah, just stand on the silver, I'm silver. Yeah, that's right.
Hi, Howard number fifty-six Mindel Road. Long time. Uh, I was interested in the budget presentation. I looked over the budget that was introduced a little over a month ago. On um, one of your slots, Al, you showed that the evaluation of the borough has gone steadily up. Uh, I looked in particular at two thousand twenty-two comparing comparing it to two thousand twenty-five. Uh, the valuation went from two point three eight eight billion to two point eight one seven billion as an increase of that seventeen or eighteen percent. But when I looked at the budget and compared year by year, what I noticed is that over the last three years. The total appropriations by local government has gone up by over twenty-five percent. Now, the borough hasn't grown by twenty-five percent. I read the Burnsville News, well-written, every week by Charlie and Associates. Uh, I haven't read about he went by for twenty-five percent more in the way of services. So I, I guess I have a little trouble understanding. What is behind a twenty-five percent increase in the total appropriations in the last three years? Now focusing a little more specifically on two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five, so that we're now looking at a one-year. Interval, the increase in the appropriations was between fourteen and fifteen percent, around fourteen point seven or so. That's the largest increase percentage-wise in total appropriations in more than sixteen years in the borough. Nothing has come close to that in that increase. There was maybe one year when the increase in appropriations order was maybe eleven percent, but it is often a small fraction. Okay, so I, I, I'm having difficulty understanding. I follow the municipal budget, not that hard to read. It's hard to understand where the fiscal discipline is. That often be applied in the borough.
Just to ask, um, sir, did you account for the Audi dealership revenue in your calculation?
Do what?
The Audi dealership revenue in your calculation?
I.
Is that the one-time revenue increase that brought it up to?
I, I looked at total appropriations. I did look at um. Total. Local tax revenues for municipal purposes also. That's increasing year by year for year from two thousand twenty-four to two thousand twenty-five by about eight point nine percent or so. I did look at the entry, at the, the revenue from the Audi dealership. Um, the other thing that interested me is on the subject of debt reduction. Over a period, a couple of years, over the last couple of years, the borough sold bond anticipation notes. Last two years, not this present year, about three point three million dollars. Now, we're lucky this year, the interest rate that the borough has to pay on bond anticipation notes went down. And so we're left with a, a financial picture in which. The borough borrowed when the interest rates for bonded straight notes were high. And now it's paying down debt service when the interest rate is low. I'm not sure I understand that. So there are a couple, a couple of points of interest. I did, but uh.
Howard, you're turning this up.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah, no problem.
Now we'll get back to you.
Okay.
For sure. I think um, you know, Nancy or Leslie, I know you're on well, welcome your comments among all the historical detail right in front. I do think you're accounting for the sale of the Audi dealership as revenue, which spiced the revenue associated with the borough's budget this year. If you would take that out of it, it would have been around nineteen million dollars. Um, which just in two thousand twenty-three, we were seventeen point seven million dollars. So it's not too much of a significant increase. Like I explained. I actually think that that actually um.
Excuse.
Excuse it. Right. Um, we've also at times have made strong investments like the three and a half million dollars in one single year for our jab. Um, and uh, the continual investment that we can try to make in the polar grounds to expand areas there. So I think it's accountable. I'm happy to break it down and look at the historical knowledge of it. Um, I don't know Nancy or Leslie, if there's anything you want to add as well.
I think that debt service is the heat presence. And I think that there's no question that this year, the difficult month for this year. Is out, I mean, one point four million dollars. Um. And um, Leslie did let me know uh, about the bond anticipation notes. They're not in debt, they're annual rules. So um, we, we're lucky to demonstrate that we did, you know, um, as well as it was this year.
I'm sorry, you roll it over, you get a new interest rate?
Right, you have to go on. It's a sale. Every month.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Gary?
Eric Basin, Mindel Road. Uh, I just want to follow up on the discussion of cameras because I hear a lot about what we're going to be doing. Uh, where we have some large capital investments in large buildings and stuff, but. While we're looking at that, maybe not really expensive cameras, but I'm concerned about some of our exposure at some of our open space properties. Particularly Kirkpatrick Park where we have open access. Uh, and we have buildings there and I think it would be easy for people to get in there and cause trouble. We've got a dry situation, a lot of fires are happening. It might not be a bad idea to have some visibility there because we will be able to get the police officers up there very often.
Yeah.
This second side.
Too.
Yeah.
Would be a good spot.
Yeah.
I do have some, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I left that out. Bonds or the capital ordnance. We did explore um. Individual uh, cameras, they're not part of this technology. They're. They're off the shelf, I guess is what we'd say, for, um, Kawas, Planmont, we can add Kirkpatrick, because they're, they're, I'm being abstract.
Um, yeah. Also, um, uh, an ongoing problem, I think it's still continuing, Charlottesville open space. Uh, I brought this to the attention of the police, there is a big problem there. There is a person who, um, one of my neighbors had taken a picture of his license plate some time back. I talked to, uh, the detective sergeant a couple of months, I'm sorry, I don't remember what his name is. But we've got access coming in along that roadway with some high clearance vehicle, and there are fires being set in there. And we're just asking for a major complication in there if we don't find out it's that. So, wow.
So we did, I could talk to, like, add enough to the list, but there was something we couldn't, because of the elevations and the new meeting. I guess, uh, geography of them, we tend to include them in this, because they're not connected to any of our services or whatever.
Yeah, but when, when you can or.
Well, people, people do like conventional, like ringing out for like a better.
Right, I did discuss it, there was some concern about whether, where our property began, but I'm pretty sure our property goes from that railroad track all the way through that access road and that is an easement on our link. Uh, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but we've got land in there that's at risk, and it's already happened.
All right, thanks Carrie.
No, it's okay, I'm gonna listen.
Anyone else? Anybody online? All right, then I.
I can't tell if there's no line, wants to help. Let me, I, I think he might, I'm not sure.
Is somebody on Zoom or?
Yeah, I, I, I had things on mute.
And I can unmute. No, still on, right.
Raise your hand.
Can you hear? Can you see me?
I'm here.
Hi. Is this, am I on Peter Tober?
Yeah.
Is this Peter Tober, one fourteen Crest Drive? Um, I have a question as to how the roads are selected as part of the budget for improvement. I don't think the DPW does a good job at all. Um, our road hasn't been touched in seventeen years, two thousand eight. Uh, the other neighbors and in my uh, complex have been promised in two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five that something would be done for our road. It's wor- rated the seventh worst road in the town, and I just heard about six roads scheduled for replacement. Do we just randomly pick and choose? Um, two of the five sections of road in my development have been resurfaced in the last two years, and they're in far better shape than mine. So I would really like an answer as to how roads are selected, is it just random? Because I've got different answers from different administrators, my neighbors have done the same, and I don't think it's a very transparent, fair and open process. Thank you.
You want to address Crest specifically, or do you want me to just talk about? Or public works?
The two, I mean, I did assure Mr. Tober that we, uh, that it's on the list for next year, that we had already done our budget this year. Um, that, uh, ranking goes online, it's a little misleading, because there's a lot of things that are taking into effect, like drains and things like that. Um, you know, I, I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm probably shouldn't even say this, but Kevin and I did drive out there recently, and like I personally did not think the borough compared to other boroughs was, was that, was that bad. And again, I live there, I don't, but, um, I did assure Mr. Tober that it would be on for next year.
Yep. And I guess the only thing I would add to that is, um, Public Works Department reviews the road list and grades all the roads. Um, with our Public Works Committee, um, I know Public Works wants to talk about it. They, that is reviewed by council, and there are times when council has intervened and said, we really want to prioritize this road, because what the administrator is pointing out is, it's not just the straight paving of the road. Sometimes the road needs to be reconstructed and reconstructed, but, um, you know, refurbished, additional drainage, et cetera. So like, for example, Burners Ave will be a good one, where indeed, they actually waited for so long, but the road really deteriorated. And we need to council decide to intervene and say, we're gonna pause all the road projects in the borough this year, so we can take care of Burners Ave. So, um, that's a little bit of a process for us to expand on.
Right, but I think there's also priorities in terms of the amount of travel on a road. Obviously, if it's a through road, it's gonna get a higher permit than if it's a cul-de-sac.
And that's a cul-de-sac.
Yeah, and sometimes what happens is on a big road project, if it comes in under budget, they have leftover pavement. We'll do some of those cul-de-sacs, it may not have been scheduled, but they'll add them in, because they're short, you know, and they're easier to do.
We did that last year, we did eight, additional.
Additional.
Last year.
Right.
And I don't want to make.
No, but sometimes that happens, so, but we can't commit to say, yes, this year, there'll be extra. All right. Anybody else? All right, I will close the public hearing on the budget, and Al, go forward.
I moved that, uh, resolution twenty-five dash seventy-three B, adoption of two thousand twenty-five municipal budget to adopt it.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Zatterino? Mr. Barr?
Yeah.
Mr. Trainor?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Right, uh, we have minutes to approve from March seventeen and March twenty-four. Anyone want to move them?
I need, uh, three minutes for March seventeen and March twenty-four.
All second.
All in favor?
Hi, hi.
And now we have another open session for anything that's not under having a public hearing, so if anybody has anything, yes, Carrie.
Hi, it's Carrie Basin, three nine seven one. I just want to follow up on the Highlands Council and where we stand with that. Back in December, we have gotten accepted and we had said that we were gonna move forward with the Highlands President's. And just wondering if the, uh, if we're gonna go forward with the ordinance to make that happen.
We are, um, I think we're waiting for our planner to put the ordinance together for us, is that correct?
Sure.
Yeah, um, because we got, because she's also working on our portable housing, which is due to end of June. We kind of gave that priority, but we will definitely be doing the ordinance probably next month, I think.
Um, I think she's been there since.
Yeah, there's nothing. But yes, we are.
I don't know what standing is with applications or things that might be happening between the time that we say we want to do it, and then we actually do it. So I, I don't know what that would mean, but I think if we're moving forward a little bit, it's best to move forward a bit.
Yeah, we are, I think it's, it's part of it is also you have to designate, you know, your downtown corridor, and so there's a lot of effort involved in it, but we are definitely moving ahead with it.
Thank you.
It's been a while, nice to see new faces and old ones.
Um, familiar ones.
Thank you, thank you. Agreed. All right, so the first, um, is a comment, is an unabashed plug for an invitation to the next Friends of the Library pre-concert series. And I know the mayor is a wonderful musical groupie, and so on May eighteenth, it's going to be a very, um, energetic mariachi band, so please swing by if you can.
What's the?
Always a lot of fun, May eighteenth.
Great.
Yeah.
Usually it's a Sunday at.
It's a Sunday at three, yeah, so it's a, an energy time, but it's a lot of fun.
Piano and marimba was.
That, you know, you're always still, but it was, it was good, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, and it's new music, next one of that is a, a real country groove ass with a fiddle and a drum, and it just, we have a little bit of fresh energy there this year, so it'll be, it'll be in this. So that was the first thing. Um, the second thing is, I remember when we first went down to three minutes, there was off, the council also said that, you know, somebody was talking here, that you could talk a little over, you'd allow that, and this gentleman was just talking nicely and having conversation with you. And so it felt uncomfortable for me that the three minutes was interrupted, that he couldn't have just finished his easy conversation with you. Um, so it's just.
Part of like, you know, this is always difficult. Um, this is a council meeting held in public, it is not a pub, it's not a town hall meeting, it's not a public meeting.
Right.
So what we try not to do is, it's not a Q and A and it's back and forth. It's a opportunity for the public to share what they're thinking.
Right.
If, you know, for questions and answers, you know, we don't have resources here with us to kind of get, that's why I kind of said we'll get back to Howard with the answers.
And I appreciated that.
Yeah, I didn't mean to cut you off, just that.
You did at the time, boy.
Of course. But is anything that needs more depth, we like to do, you know, one-on-one, or, you know, with a separate meeting than to take time in it, because we're just trying to get through our resolutions and things.
You do manage the stuff in a very well.
She did, I agree. So my last thing in forty-one seconds, so beat me, Anthony, all right, is about the flash vote. Uh, oh, wow, all right, I would like to hear about that, like who's.
You will, you're gonna hear it in my report.
Okay, let, so my questions, you'll, like, who's seeding that, how many people in town, how, who's formulating those questions? How is that information gonna be used? Um, did you have to pay for it? Because I understand there are government fees to it. And one of the things that I did sign up, um, but it was in perpetuity, it was something, and I hate when I see that in a, in an obligation or something, and that was here in this borough.
So, yeah, you always have the option to not do it, when they send it, you can say, no, not this time.
Right, okay, so.
But I'm gonna do, explain that more as part of my report, what the whole program is.
Okay, and how are these, the, the results and so forth, because for example, even on the website of Flash Vote, the example that they give, like how would you rate the overall fall of the advantage among the parks? Well, that's great, you can say they're great or they're awful, but you don't know the details of why and what that might mean. So that was my concern with it, I imagine that is a group to talk about that, there's a lot of implications to that, so I will be looking forward to that, thank you.
I have a quick question about the library music. Uh, is, does it, do you ever do it outside, in the patio?
You know, we have to kind of harvest that, yeah, yes, I guess with the shorthand for, a lot of it depends on whether the area where they play it is on the front side, and so that's, uh, was that Anderson Hall?
Yes.
Please, please, since the music presentation.
Like a mariachi band, it just seems like it'd be more.
Oh, man. Bring it, thank you. You're ready.
It's a totally different thought, thirty, thirty seconds, especially I'll remind everybody about the brief here on Saturday, May tenth. Go on down, kind of get to see, like, you know, find out about, uh, all the kind of exhibitions we're gonna have. Uh, the second thing is just to remind people, or like, maybe if you didn't know, that, um, Community Synd crisis is having their, their gala at Fiddler's, um, Delbo on, um, on the fifteenth.
And, um, you know, you can come down and support that organization and learn more about it as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I'm very sorry I'm going to miss the brief here, I will be in California, I don't get away much, but you know, it's never a good time when I go. Sorry to miss it. Uh, anyone else?
Yes. Uh, I have a question also about the, um, survey, sorry, just.
Flash vote.
Flash vote. Who, uh, creates the questions, because of course, how a question is framed or the depth of the issue that is being questioned on any level goes a long way to indicating whether it's going to be a useful, illuminated vote or not. So I would like to hear when you discuss it, what, who's going to be in charge of creating those? Who's gonna be in charge of analyzing the data that comes in? There are a lot of, uh, very complicated questions in the borough, and a lot more I'm sure to come, just given how things are going. Um, and so I would like to just have insight into who will really be in charge of that process and how that will.
Thank you, okay, great, thanks.
Need a full flash poll question, but just to add a question, because I was involved in the, uh, with all the polling that we did associated with the rec plan. And we had one group that was mailed to a very, a, 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 a statistically significant sample to get something back. And then we had another poll that you could answer as many times as you wanted. So I was, my question is, will this be a one, one-shot answer poll? Or will somebody who has one particular thing in mind be able to respond fifty times and skew things in one direction?
Yeah, they won't, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, I will close the public session, um, moving on to ordinances. Uh, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty eighteen, which is amending section eleven dash four of the Borough Code entitled Registration and Maintenance of Properties Pending Foreclosure to Bring It Into Compliance With A Recent Court Decision. Anyone want to be heard on that? I, I was, I have a question on that. Um, let's start with Rich.
I move pass ordinance number twenty twenty-five, that's formally seen, uh, final reading and adopt as public.
All sudden. Roll call.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse? Uh, that, that, yeah, yes, uh, well, here, training?
Yes.
Mr. Barr? Mr. Dandren?
Yes.
Great, I will open the public hearing on ordinance twenty twenty-five, twenty nineteen, and ordinance, wait, I'm doing this again, twenty nineteen, bond ordinance providing for the acquisition of a new ambulance by the borough of Burnsville in the county of Somerset, New Jersey, appropriating three hundred and fifty thousand dollars therefore, and authorizing the issuance of three hundred and twelve thousand two hundred dollars bonds or notes of the borough for financing such appropriation. Anyone in the public wish to be heard on this ordinance? Oh, okay.
Thanks, Harrison, according to the president of the Burnsville Department. Um, so I just want to give a, a brief thank you to the council, the finance committee involved residents of the town, uh, for re-proposing this, uh, this purchase of the new ambulance or replacement of an ambulance. Um, for those who don't know, we have two ambulances in town. Um, uh, we call them, start their numeric as a nation, one seven five and one seven six, and this is a replacement of one seven five, which is about twenty-four years old, um, and, uh, ordering on its last leg. Um, we'd like to continue to provide a comfortable ride to the hospital for those who need it most. Um, so this is a replacement for that ambulance, um, that's slated for the coming year, so we really appreciate you working with us and you helping us out in, uh, forming our mission of, you know, riding safely the residents, so thank you.
Thank you, and for those, you know, I have to constantly remind people, these are all volunteers, our fire department and our first aid are all volunteers, so, um, it is amazing the amount of time and training that goes through to serve the community, so thank you.
Um, quick question, what happens to the old ambulances?
Um, Harrison, what do you do with the old ambulance? Question, what, what happens to the old ambulance?
Uh, there's, there's, the old ambulance can be sold or whatever, you know, scrapped it is.
Like dog deals, we do it on.
Yeah.
Certainly, you can, so excepting it's in our, right, we, we have the status.
Yes.
There's all certain ways you can dispose, one of them is traded in, so that would be.
We can learn value as well in, in the, um, the engines that we use are the lapels, uh, we do solely train and carry it, um, uh, in precipitate, um, so, but yes, so it's like, that is.
When you said twenty-four years old?
Uh, just about, it's a reflection of their character. Yes, yeah. Maybe it's like my apartment. Yeah.
Well, my. Thanks, Harrison. Okay, anyone else? And I will close the public hearing on this ordinance. Now, what's, you want to be gathered?
I move the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty-one, I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Nineteen ordinance, oh, I'm sorry. I move to pass, I'm sorry, I move to pass the ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty nineteen on final reading and adopt as public.
Second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Dandren?
Hi, yes.
Mr. Barr? Mr. Rainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ruse, the passing for this, for a bar?
Yes.
We don't know, we have to wait for Jeff.
Three, four, remember, you go, there's your monkey, two, back there.
Yeah, just a little, one, the door, the one we got. We need, I did. Um, we have some ordinance for introduction, um. These are for, uh, capital improvements on, everybody just wanted to. Who's, now you want to choose that?
That's the same.
Oh, film the home.
Film the home.
Yeah.
I move that one, twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty, appropriating one point seven nine 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 hundred dollars from the capital improvement fund for various equipment and improvements as listed in the twenty twenty-five municipal budget. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law under a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M. Tuesday, May twenty seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
Second.
Ball favor? The vote? We, we can do that with three votes, right?
Yes, or four, four. You're gonna do it with three.
Yeah. You have another one for, for rezoning? Yeah, which one is this?
Seven.
Seven. Oh, right, that's what's taking.
Yes.
Yes.
Can you do this one?
Sure.
I need the ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash twenty one, and the ordinance rezoning lot two in block sixty-two, and amending section twelve dash twenty-two point two of the Borough Law and regulations entitled zoning rap. Be introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and that a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning seven P M. Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five.
Ball favor?
Aye.
opposed. All right, we have one more. Um, and this is the process we've been working on for uh, replacing our police chief, so that we have a process in set in stone, pretty much, so to follow each time. Um, first thing, or did you just do that one?
Um, I move that ordinance twenty twenty-five dash twenty twenty-two, and the ordinance establishing a motion process for chief of police and supplementing and amending chapter two of the Borough Code entitled administration being introduced by title, passed on first reading, published according to law, and a public hearing be scheduled for a meeting beginning at seven P M, Tuesday, May twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-five.
Thank you.
All second.
Ball favor?
Ayes.
opposed? Okay, moving on to resolutions. Um, I think we talked about most of these last week, didn't we? Um, with St. John on the Mountain, that's, it, uh, is just authorizing it as a shelter, which we do every year. Um, salaries. The green building practices. Thank you, Jeff. Yeah, okay, we got that one. Um, and yes, thank you to, uh, our people for, the senior members for joining the fire company. And that's, so we have, um, three, two P W people that are kind of going to be available during the day to help. So that's great. We have, uh, a grant, an eighty-eight thousand dollar grant to our recreation pavilion. So that's very, very enthusiastic. Um, the Anwar Center is coming back to Shain Tree. So that's terrific. I don't know. We're doing an officer charge for the police department. I think that's a bit. I think that's pretty much all the evidence. Okay? Anybody have any questions? What, you want to move them?
I move the resolutions twenty-five dash seventy-four through twenty-five dash ninety-one. Uh, Eva?
Ball call please.
Mr. Ramar?
Yes.
Mr. Danson?
Mr. Rainer? Yes.
Mr. Ramar?
Yeah.
Eva Dandren?
Yes.
All right, Mayor's update. Happy. I did attend a, the Member Wellness Campaign at Mount Ball, which, um, they do them quarterly, which is great, because we get to, um, it's a Zoom meeting with all the other, um, mayors, wellness committees through the county. So we get to share ideas and find out what other towns are doing, and, uh, it's very useful. And I attended a program by the, uh, Business Partnership on A I and never self co-pilot. Scary stuff. Uh, and then on the thirty-first, we had our flash vote kickoff. So what flash vote is, it is a scientific surveying method. And what we did with, um, I know Nancy and I met with them several times. We went, and I guess you guys all had the program. They create a panel of about two hundred people that are randomly, just by, you know, I mean, I'm gonna, I put out, uh, I think to most of the emails I have, and then we'll be putting it on the bubble, that anybody in town can sign up, because you don't know what the survey's about. It's just saying, if there's a survey, you'd be willing to fill it out. So we're not saying it's about this subject, and then, oh, I want to fill that out, because I hate that, you know? You're not getting people signing up because of an issue. They're just signing up because they want to be involved in decisions made in town. However, when you take the survey, the results are immediately given to you. So you, as the person who filled out the survey, will see the results. You don't have to wait. Like, we don't get them, and then, you know, maybe we're not gonna share, because we don't like the way they came out. They are immediately available to us and to the people taking the survey. They, um, the, the two hundred that forms kind of the panel is what they use for most of the questions. And then you can open it up. So say if you had, uh, for an example, they did one in Canada before a, an ice rink that they had that was open for skating, and then in the summer, they used it for other events and things. And so they wanted some, people were pushing, saying, we want to have it ice skating all year. So they use their study group, you know, the two hundred people or have, or anyone else, and said, um, if this was possible, which would you like? Would you like it to be open all year? Would you love, you know, and it very, it's maybe eight, ten questions. It's not a very involved, intense um, questioning. And what happened was they got a fairly good, from the middle to the two hundred people, that they kind of liked the fact that it was varied. They had skating and whatever. Then they opened it up to anybody in town. Here's a survey about how you want to use your skating rink. And of course, all the skating people sent it to all their friends, and they sent it out, and then it skewed the results, I think. So they can pull out this, the panel from the, the, you know, people that are trying to skew it. So you can see the difference. Um, it's really, I mean, I, I thought it was fascinating. Uh, we get to do up to, I think, six surveys a year. They have lots of samples. They help us develop them, because they are professionals in statistical, uh, you know, how you word questions. I remember taking that course in college uh, on the way that you have to word questions, and then open-ended, blah, 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 and how you can't phrase it. Well, do you really? You know, so you can't skew the words. So they work with us as part of, yes, we pay for it. It wasn't a lot. It was a couple thousand dollars. Um, but we have access to their professional people who know how to write surveys, um, know how to research data, understand data. And I think what the council's goal is, it's information that can help us in our decision-making. It's not a vote, you know, it's not, oh, the people said this, we have to do it. It's really giving us information to make our decisions. Um, it could be a simple thing about just community satisfaction, or it could be, do you want it on the term field? You know, it could be on anything that, um, so we haven't quite worked out which, what kind of survey we want to do yet. We're still trying to build our panel, which is why some of you got invited. Is I just randomly adding emails I had sent out. I think we just made the first hundred. I think, I think we got past a hundred. And then I have to, uh, now put it out on the bubble for people, anyone else who wants to sign up, that they didn't hear about it. So it's really, you know, and some people who don't want to do it. It's really for people who care about the community and want, you know, get to weigh in on things that come up. They're not necessarily going to be controversial issues. It could just be something very general that helps us. Did I answer or raise questions? Kind of?
I think.
I have a question after. I mean, I do have a question based on what you just said. Is, and how, is, is there a way to guarantee, I guarantee is spelled wrong, or that, kind of like all demographics are reached? You know, you, you want to make sure that you are, you are making sure that the panel is different parts of the population who are, you know, you not just lose their, any age group.
Yeah.
Is there a way to?
They do, you think. Yes, they asked us for all that, and we gave them an awful lot of information. Um, and they then look at whatever we gave them, and then look where there's, where things are missing. If, you know, I, we got a hundred people that signed up, and they're all from, you know, um, Burnsville. You know, they're. So we do try and do, you know, by neighborhoods and sections. Yeah, Carrie.
Yeah, just to build on that, like, if, if they started with my email list, or Michelle's email list, or Kathy's, or Bob's, or or in, in Harold's, or yours, we all have email lists that are skewed in a certain direction towards our own friends. And I think that if we started with mine, I would object and say that that isn't going to give us a starting point with that first hundred.
But I'd like to say mine is not skewed. Anybody who's ever written to me gets on my list. And sometimes they're not always nice. Anything that, you know, if you get my newsletter, that's the list that I use. And it goes to, you know, eh, eh, really, anybody that's sent me an email at any time in the last seven years. Yeah, yeah. Even if they're complaining, they put them on the list, because I figure, you know, maybe they get my newsletter, they won't be so angry.
Yeah, well, first of all, you don't want mine, but, um, the term was a good example, because that's why I was thinking, isn't like, let's say somebody might want to, to another term. But that, and I'd say, yeah, yeah, that might save you in three acres of wooded property, or Adam likes that over there in the evening. And so it's not just Adam or fields, because we're complicated. That might not just be addressed with a simple, quick question.
No, but I think if we have, um, and if you go on, there's, I don't know if they have samples. Do they show you samples of some of that?
To get that, I mean, one.
Yeah.
There's, yeah. So I, I think it was not nuanced enough.
That they, well, I think, I, because I'm thinking of the one with the ice skating thing, because they did go through, you know, what the cost would be if we did this?
Okay.
You know, are you willing to, you know, have your taxes go up if you were to have?
There would be, are you going to have land cleared? Is it okay if there are?
No, that's skewed a little bit, like.
Oh. The castle in real life, that there are other.
Yeah.
I think, yeah, just, you know, that is now, we're not solely focused on, you know, another single service or certain issue, or, you know, that's a service. That's in government our next year.
And that's amazing, in, of having professionals and a company that specializes in this, because I know if we made up our own survey, it probably would be, even, no matter how hard you try, you're, you're going to have a bias to it. So I think the fact that these people don't know our town, you know, and they're just giving us a, a way to have people give their input. So, and that's, that's our goal, is that then we have some information to help us make decisions.
Well, I think it's a noble goal, and just, you know, getting there can be, and like I would say, that would be a public meeting, with, but only the side.
Of course, yeah.
So, yeah.
Oh, we need to take that vote.
Yeah.
For, okay. Can we just do the ball call?
You guys say it again, Jeff?
You, you moved exactly, so we can go.
Just go.
Okay.
Just a roll call on the budget.
Some of the bond, none of the, I'm, this is, and the award.
Yeah.
Low, low rate, right? We got a low rate.
Well, this is. Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Ramar?
Yes.
Mr. Ruth?
Yeah.
Mr. Rainer?
Yes.
Mr. Ramar? Mr. Dandren?
Yes.
We're good. We're good. We got the vote. Okay, uh, we, uh, actually, Rick and I attended the fire company dinner. Thank you so much for the invitation. Yes, it's very nice. Um, I did a ribbon cutting for Society of Real Estate, which is a, you know, real estate, uh, just the real estate and marketing that just opened there upstairs from, um, what is, you know, where, uh, Spa Rejive is, in that building, you know, like on the top floor there. So if you want to stop in and say hi, they did a beautiful job on redoing that building. It is magnificent. Um, I attended a, a fundraiser for heart works at the Burgers Inn. Uh, I met with Emily Labdone of City Lifestyle Magazine, who, if you get those in the mail, Somerset Hills, they've been very interested in our community and, uh, connected them with other people, to make sure every, every month there's something. I attended the Easter extravaganza that Recreation did. It was boring that day, so they had it in the middle school gym. It was for me. And our administrator was there, and the, uh, the DJ they had, when I was, uh, they let me say a few words, and I thanked Nancy for coming, and he said, you know, all the times I've done these things, I've never seen an administrator here. So, thank you. They did. It was outstanding. They had the, the Easter, and it was hard to control an Easter egg. We brought them all out and put them on the floor. But it was a lot of fun. The petting zoo was there. It was, it was really a good activity. Um, I attended lunch and learn by the, um, League of Municipalities on the state budget, which is fifty-eight point one billion proposed. We need six point three billion surplus. Uh, there is no, um, additional municipal relief funding, but then we're not getting anything there. State health benefits, we're getting double-digit increases this year. Um, part of what the league is trying to do on, uh, the health benefits is, right now, they're advocating for some short-term relief to those cost increases, but, um, advocating for, you know, long-term reform, because, you know, those are numbers that we get hit with and have no, you don't know what's coming, uh, how big the increase is going to be every year. That was next. I went to the Land Board meeting, but I think Fran did a good job of covering everything in our last meeting, so you got your little calendars for May? Uh, I attended a webinar about downtown New Jersey on restaurant trends, and the thing that struck me on that was what some of the restaurant owners were saying is they never expected they would be making mocktails. That that is a whole new trend, because people are trying not to drink as much. Uh, I thought that was really funny. Then I had another lunch and learn, energy tax receipts and public notices. And if you know, uh, anything about the um, energy tax receipts, there is a tax you pay in your utility bill that is for municipal relief, for them, for the utility companies to have access to our bowls and our easements and all that. When it was first added, all the money came to the municipality. Then the state, what was it? Um, trying to think when it happened, but the state at some point said, you know what? It's kind of time-consuming for, uh, you know, you have to collect all this and blah, blah, and go. This, we'll collect it, because the, you know, there, JCP now is writing all these checks to all these towns, or P S C and G. So they're gonna write one check to the state, and we'll, then we'll give it back to you. We'll issue it out. You know how long that lasts? So what happened was, they started not giving us the money back, uh, using it to offset the budget. Um, so the League of Municipality has been really advocating. We did a resolution. We're gonna do another one tonight. And so in twenty twenty-three, um, they finally gave us back seventy-five million. I think right now, there's three hundred and thirty million that we should, the town should be getting that they're not. Um, so they appropriated seventy-five million that they called it municipal relief fund, and we got that. And we got that last year. I think spread out over boroughs. Um, in twenty twenty-four, they up to two hundred and fifty million. Um, this year it's staying at a hundred and fifty million, so we are still advocating for full restoration of those funds. Um, you know, that would make a huge difference for municipalities to have that money back. But anyway, so that's the status of the, uh, energy tax receipts. We are going to be doing a resolution. A lot of towns, I think last time we had a, a, a letter that uh, four or five hundred mayor sign that we sent to our senators and the governor. So hopefully it will work again, but as for the public notices, um, those of you who are my age who loved getting the Star Ledger delivered and don't anymore, uh, since many newspapers have stopped publishing, um, we are required to publish our public notices in print. And so was it, um, they did a little quick duct, duct tape um, and said that we could do them online. Uh, but that is sunsetting, I think, June third. So they're still working on, um, they, I think they're going to extend it. But the newspapers are now going to be required to give them all kinds of data. So what we're advocating for is that we can post it on our website. And that would be enough, the public notice. And, um, they're surveying each of the municipalities to find out how much we have for any time to, um, notice the meetings, bids. You know, we, we do want to advertise them, so. Uh, what else? Actually, the Somerset Hills City Lifestyle had a, um, inception at Merini the other night that was really nice. Main Street, what's going on with Main Street? Um, we will be having music on May on June sixth. It's a Friday night. So there will be bands in different places. We're getting permission from some of the different merchants to have a band or combo. So you can walk around town. It's, it's reminiscent of sounds around town. Uh, but that'll be June sixth. Um, July twentieth, it will be the car show at the train station. This year, we're going to be doing a taste of the town. On September twenty-third, we'll be at the Burgers Inn, who have been so generous in letting us use the ballroom at no charge. So we're going to try and have all our local restaurants to have tastings, and this will be a fundraiser for the fire company. So we're hoping, uh, that all goes off well. Business improvement grants, Main Street has been giving, um, up to two thousand dollars to small local businesses. And if you've noticed, have you seen that pretty lately? The mural, that was from Grant from Main Street. So we're doing a little photo shoot there tomorrow. I think it's gorgeous. They did uh, they're the first ones to get the little grants. And there's, you know, still working, we're reporting housing and hopefully we'll have that coming up soon. So that was my report. Sorry to take so long. Um, Nancy, do you have something?
Yes, I have enough to the birds. Um, New Jersey River Water, uh, just started, um, replacing the, uh, galley and steel pipes that go from the street to legal houses. Um, they're doing a pretty dark. Uh, there are not that many still around, um, but do you mind if I already got that? They're going to reach out, um, by mail, um, and then they will follow up. Something on our website, but if you do get, and we have a contact in my business, go visit them. Um, there's a map, there's a length of the map, you can just look up your address and it shows what you have. Uh, yeah, we have a galley and a picture of it. So, uh, please want to let, we'll know if it's not uh, and it's free, you know, they're like, we prefer.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Um, The Good View is the walking path construction, uh, contractor to break some ground tomorrow. So that will, uh, be done hopefully in the next few months. Um, as you mentioned, you can have the resolution accepted. We've got eighty-eight thousand dollar grant from, um, the, uh, DCA for the building. So, um, I mentioned this last week, uh, Tony Hajar was very instrumental in helping me with that, um, and talking to Zara and I, and thank you to the women, or, you know, they just, uh, salary for, you know, several years, just kind of wondering. So, uh, now I will work with, um, even New Year's there, with, and with Tom, the new director, to put some new plans together. As I mentioned to you, um, the costs have already come down because of the, like, four that we did. Um, TBW will be dating the trenches for two weeks. So that also going to talk down, so we will get the design built for much more than what we Um, being more than free, um, the, um, Monday, April fifteenth, the ten thirty man. The farm will get, it'll be on May thirty-third, um. And yeah, thanks to Tom, he's been working pretty hard, uh, doing that because we've kind of taken it in, uh, through this talent account. Um, and Madeline English, uh, who'd worked on so many years, you know, will continue to volunteer um, at the market, but we've kind of taken ownership of it. So, uh, Tom, given with the vendors and the whole stuff. Uh, and I just, you also referenced this earlier, I want to congratulate the Chief Remians on his upcoming retirement. His left leg will be May thirty-third, it's on digital bed, May thirty-third. And this has the river event today, Captain Retal, the officer in charge, which is essentially the same thing that happened in the police chief, uh, affected on Newton Burke and telling him.
That was been news. Thank you. Uh, we have to accept the departmental monthly reports?
I'm going to accept the departmental monthly reports. Sorry.
All in favor?
All right.
And the thing to correspond is on finished business.
I want to do a finished business. Um, actually got from CFO some of the answers to, uh, the gentleman who asked about the budget. Yeah. So I just wanted to maybe enter them in the public record. And this is to say, I didn't capture everything. So if you send a question or you talk after the meeting, I'm happy to capture them and then with the finance department to get you all the answers that you need. So, um, I mentioned the Audi dealership and the large percentage of the budget, and it was a one-time hit that we're, that's hitting our budget this year, that's really skewing the way the budget looks. It represents seven percent of the entire budget this year. Um, if you took out the Audi dealership, which is a one-time item, then I'm just going to talk about the average increase on both the borough municipal budget as well as evaluation. From twenty twenty-two to twenty twenty-three, the borough budget increased by five point six percent, valuation increased by four point five. From twenty-three to twenty-four, we went up five percent in the borough municipal budget, valuation went up six point one percent. And this year, um, it was seven point three percent, the, um, twenty-four to twenty-five. And they said the valuation went up eight, eight point eight percent, quarter to nine percent. So the average of increase in the borough budget over the course of those three years has been six percent. And the average increase in valuation has been six point five percent. So I do think it's a fiscally responsible budget. I think we were able to do all this despite inflation, and I think everyone's accounted for the significant amount of inflation, the cost of materials that have risen up, the increase in salaries, the increase in the state mandated health benefits, significant increase in utilities, um, increase in roads and the cost there that we've hit. And as I said in the presentation, um, our discretionary connection control, we represent four percent of budgets, like, you know, eight hundred fifty thousand, nine hundred thousand dollars. And even with playing just that four percent of the course of the last few years, we have increased maybe, not all, but a number of the roads, including the significant refurbishment of our debt, increased security, like we've talked about before, but that also accounts for the cameras that we installed that stopped some of the car deaths that have happened in the borough and the partnership of the police department. Um, help to advance the recreation program, including improvements of the playground and the topic one controversial thing, the cobalt quartz that we put in. And, um, you know, and also, you know, uh, help to fund a number of the areas that you talked about before, such as funding, fully funding the library, increasing the fire department allocation, et cetera. So I just wanted to provide additional context. I know there's more questions, including the debt servicing, et cetera. And I didn't capture all that, but we can talk afterwards, take it down, and then I'm happy to answer it offline too.
Thank you.
And thanks to Leslie for the quick rant.
Oh, was anything else in the new business? Okay, then we have a resolution to, uh, the superior upgrades. Jeff, are you ready?
Is this the sort of cameras?
Yes.
Just the only thing I want to say, and I, and I emailed Nancy earlier about this, about, uh, it did seem like a pretty big high number. Uh, and, and I didn't want to come in and level it out, or I know they've been working on it for a year. And, and looking at, you know, what do we actually need, what would it cost? Um, so, so I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of it. She sent me a very, thank you for a very detailed response back. Uh, I still tend to think that uh, perhaps we're just some, you know, in a certain area, certain, uh, buildings maybe require a lot more uh, sophisticated equipment, but it seems like what we're talking about with some of these like outline properties, where you have the off-the-shelf. But, you know, ring, blink, those types of things, which are, which are pretty advanced and they're pretty full. Like, it just seems like we give you more of some of that, maybe do like a combination between sort of the higher-end sophisticated stuff and then the off-the-shelf stuff. Uh, so, now I'm not going to vote against this, I'll prove it, but as you're looking at that, if there's any, you know, I don't know, like the library, you know, hallway, you know, we're worried about somebody sleeping there. Like, it seems like a linking camera could, could cover that. So just, just asking that they kind of look at what, where we're putting the cameras and, and sort of just take a hard look at it and say, okay, you know, any of these can be replaced with something a little bit more off-the-shelf.
And we are fortunate to have him here, so we, who's done a lot of the research.
Good evening. Uh, we're nice on this.
Paying on the next side. Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, we worked on this for a year. Uh, Nancy, uh, Tess, myself and Kevin from Road Department. Um, to look into this with the task and goal, you know, comprehensive, long-packed um, vendor for security, right? Um, some stuff is plug and play, um, but I think when you see body, we're getting out of this, um, partial test is anything that I would put in my house, right? Um, but it also puts it in one package. So in the midnight hour, when we're trying to do an investigation, or we have a problem, all of our security suite is in one package, right? Um, if an employee gets terminated, if there's an unwanted person we've got a problem with, this new vendor that we chose, which is actually the cheapest of four uh, we looked into, um, it doesn't have facial identification, but it will learn through AI and say, hey, we don't want Al here anymore. I'll order the administrator when he's here. Sorry, I picked on you. And the administrator of the police chief can get a text message when it identifies Al on the property. Right? If we have a cleaning service and we remove somebody from the cleaning service, we can say they're only allowed between hours of five and seven PM. If they're not here, if they're here after hours after that, send us a look. Um, same with, uh, access controls we're doing here and the library. Um, if we terminate an employee or somebody retires, we don't have to do the expensive chain and all the OR codes. We just remove their RFID from that. Um, the current system is a punch key for access control, which is in the most secure, right? And then the cameras are far, um, inadequate and outdated from what modern technology and what people would assume a borough has for, um, technology and security in our locations. That's, that's a thousand level overview from what you can research as vendor online. So, uh, there's obviously a lot more stuff that we can do security wise with that, that I won't say.
Is it a system you can add on to?
Uh, we chose this on purpose, um, that the system we get it on to, and the one key component from this we got from IT was that the data is stored with the vendor and backed up by them. So we don't have to maintain a server with terrorized information and a backup server for accreditation for us, or we need to have a backup of that data stored. Um, ten-year warranty on all parts of the vendor we chose. So if the camera goes bad in a year, nine and a half, we get a brand new camera, put a ten-year lifespan um, out of it. So we tried to be frugal. It was the cheapest of four vendors. I know it's a big number.
I mean, I, I said this for a time, but we did pare it down significantly. I forget how much it started.
We were up to two fifty, we got it down to seventy-seven. So we, it was apples to apples for this campus. We, this was thirty thousand dollars less than the same competitor, and then we expanded out to their borough properties to make sure we have one package for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, anybody else have questions for the town?
Nope. Thank you for all the work on it.
All right, I moved that resolution twenty-five dash ninety-three via adopted. Ninety-three, sorry.
Second.
Um, roll.
For Verber?
Yes.
Mister Ruth? Mister Trainer? Yes. Mister Marra?
Yes.
Mister Valerino?
Yes.
Um, Jenny, now we have the user for uh, the energy terms receipts. Around, you know.
Show us the money?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We want it back.
We want it back. Um, I knew that resolution twenty-five dash nine-three via adopted.
Second. Roll call.
Mister Valerino?
Yes.
Mister Marra?
Yeah.
Mister Trainer? Yes. Mister Ruth? Yeah. Mister Verber?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now we have our next open session. If anyone would like to be heard again. Anybody online? All right, close the public session. Uh, I guess we have executive contract negotiations, so thank you all for coming.
Thank you.